This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the April 17th, 2024 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We do have all commissioners present this evening. At this time, I would ask you to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions at the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the township website for public access. At this time, I would like to ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to please review our public virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The public virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record, and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone, and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce the Board of Commissioners met an executive session on April 10th and prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, courtesy of the floor, this is opportunity for any member of the public to comment on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone present in the room this evening or online who'd like to address the board? Hearing and seeing none, I'll move on to Agenda Item 5, Presentations. We have our financial summary report, which will be presented by our Director of Finance, Tricia Dicker.
Good evening, Commissioners. So Kristin Blonnik prepares financial statements for all of us every month. Those financial statements get sent to the board, and then they get posted on the township's website. What we're doing now is, in addition to the financial statements, we're just doing a brief summary, the second meeting of every month, just to kind of show you what the performance looks like in each of the funds. There's nothing real noteworthy, so I'll just go over the ones where I think just a general explanation is not necessary but helpful. In the general fund, you can see the revenue is coming in at a slow pace, and I'd just like to point out that the township real estate tax bills go out April 1st, so we should see that revenue line start to pick up with the April financials because you do get a lot of people that get their township real estate tax bill and pay it right away. So we should see that starting to take shape with the April financials. Most of that comes by way of mortgage companies, so we don't tend to see those files until May or June. So you'll start to see that revenue pick up at a pretty good pace. That takes us right into FIRE, and that's the same thing. So if you look at the revenue number to date for FIRE, just take that with a grain of salt because the FIRE tax, again, being situated on the township's real estate bill, that will also start to filter in, or I should say fill up, when we hit the end of April. Okay? There's really nothing noteworthy right now in water, sewer, or refuse. Capital, you know, when capital projects are started, you know, sometimes they don't reach completion, or we don't start getting invoices for those expenses. So that's why you'll see the capital expenses are still pretty much held at a minimum as opposed to the capital projects that were approved with the budget process last year. And then the only other thing is looking at state highway aid, which, you know, is tied to street lighting, and you can see that we already received the revenue that we expected for that particular fund. That's all I have. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to try and answer them. I believe Kristin Blonnik is online, so she may be able to help also if it's something that I can't answer at arm's reach.
Very good, Tricia. Thank you for presenting. Thank you to Kristin and your team for preparing these and for keeping our board up to date on our fund balances. Does the board have any comments or questions at this time? Any public comment? No? Very good. Well, thank you very much for the update.
Thank you all.
Moving on to Agenda Item 6, Meeting Minutes from the March 20th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting have been distributed to the board in advance for your review. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We have no ordinances this evening. Agenda Item 8, Resolutions, 8A, we have a resolution appointing Philip Ingram as a regular member to the South Whitehall Township Civil Service Commission. I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to present this agenda item.
Thank you. Upon review of relevant township records, the Civil Service Commission is currently comprised of one regular member, Vinnie Quinn, term expiring July 31st, 2025, and three alternates, Shokat McGool, term expiring October 19th, 2028, Philip Ingram, term expiring July 31st, 2025, and Adil Ahmad, term expiring May 17th, 2029. As per the Civil Service Commission rules, the alternate members have the same authority as regular members to ensure that the Civil Service Commission may hold a quarm and conduct official business of the Civil Service Commission. However, administratively, it is prudent to now move two alternates to the two primary positions. This action will also create two vacancies in the alternate positions. Accordingly, the Police Department and township manager requesting the following: appoint Shokat McGool to a regular member term expiring December 31st, 2027, and to appoint Philip Ingram to a regular member term expiring December 31st, 2029. In this way, the Civil Service Commission will be comprised of three regular members with staggered terms as required by ordinance, or by the rules, I'm sorry, ending in 2025, 27, and 29. There will be one alternate member, who is Adal Adil Ahmad, and two alternate vacancies. So I'd request approval of the following two resolutions: resolution appointing Shokat McGool as a regular member to the South Whitehall Township Civil Service Commission, and a resolution appointing Philip Ingram as a regular member to the South Whitehall Township Civil Service Commission.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Does the board have any comments or questions on either of these resolutions? Or any public comment? Okay, then do I have a motion to adopt the resolution appointing Philip Ingram as a regular member to the South Whitehall Township Civil Service Commission?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And do I have a motion to adopt resolution appointing Shokat McGool as a regular member of the South Whitehall Township Civil Service Commission?
Motion.
Second. Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, and I thank both individuals for their service to the township through Civil Service Commission. Agenda Item 8C, we have resolutions for State Route 309 and State Route 1002, Tillman Street interchange project. I'll ask Tom Petrucci again to present.
Thank you. So for the interchange project, there's really three separate items that the state is asking you to take action on. The first is with respect to sidewalks, the second is with respect to lighting, and the third is for the interconnect of the signalized intersections. So I'm going to get into more detail on each and then ask for the action individually. So I'll stop, though, after each section if you have questions, for example, on the sidewalk, or the interconnect, or the lighting.
Very good.
Okay, so the sidewalk is primarily going to be on private property. There is a section that is in PennDOT's right-of-way, which is basically an island in one of the roadway sections. So where the sidewalk is being installed that is in PennDOT's right-of-way, pretty much the township would be responsible to maintain that. Everywhere else that's on private property, the township would have to, by ordinance, essentially bestow the maintenance responsibilities and the ownership responsibilities on to the property owners. That's pursuant to PennDOT requirements as well as the First Class Township Code. So the township, by approving the resolution tonight, is simply indicating that you accept the sidewalks to be built, and then you would accept them after they're constructed at a later date, and then you would pass an ordinance, you know, requiring the maintenance to go to the property owners on which the sidewalks will be installed. And then you'd have to call out the specific areas associated with the project. The township had a few questions, and one of which was if the township, if the sidewalk is subject to an HOP, and if the sidewalk is destroyed during the construction process for whatever reason, what remedy would the township or the property owner, as applicable, have in the event that the scenario occurs? So just to confirm, ownership and responsibility of the sidewalk occurs at the completion of the sidewalk installation. So if during the construction period there's damages to the sidewalk, PennDOT would be responsible for those. And once the township conveys them over to the property owner, then it would fall, like, under our guidelines for any other sidewalk that we currently have that are situated on private property. Are there any questions on the sidewalk agreement?
Are there any board questions on the sidewalk agreement? Is there any public comment?
Just do the owner, property owners know they're going to be responsible for?
Most of it is already, it's pretty much existing. Some of it is existing, some of it's not. To answer your question, no, it's, we haven't gone through that stage of the process yet. PennDOT just gave us this information, and they really are asking for the township to first make sure you're in agreement with installing it. You have the right to say, no, you don't want the sidewalk. But to be clear, the township previously requested this sidewalk because it maintains connection points. So to answer your question, no, that would come at a subsequent date in which we'd have to review that with the property owners.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Any public comment? Nothing online, Dave? Tom, should we do the motion for this one before we go on?
It's up to the board. I mean, you can, of course, or we could just do them later, one after you've gone through each one. I would recommend you do it now unless there's an additional question.
Okay, I'll do that. So at this point, then, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution approving a sidewalk maintenance agreement between South Whitehall Township and PennDOT for the Route 309 and State Route 1002 Tillman Street Interchange Project?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, so moving on to the lighting agreement. So as part of the new interchange, PennDOT is attempting to meet federal highway guidelines with respect to lighting. So there's no existing interchange lighting currently. So this would be a significant upgrade for the area from a safety standpoint. So it's interchange lighting that provides lighting at all the conflict points within the interchange as well as at the intersections. So again, the overall goal with this from PennDOT was to enhance safety. And so there's 41 proposed lights on the project. Lighting consists of 34 new pole-mounted lights, four lights attached to utility poles, and three on signal poles. Within the project limits, there are two existing utility pole-mounted lights at the intersections, and there are no existing lights at the ramps. So approximately, just for reference, the lights themselves, each, the poles and the associated equipment, cost about $6,500 each. PennDOT is putting up that cost. But should you have to ever replace the ones you're taking over, that gives you an idea of how much each would cost. We would, of course, add this to our insurance policy as well, if provided, you know, it can be covered. I'm pretty sure it can, however. The estimated electrical costs for each streetlight pole are approximately $250 per year. And we had indicated to PennDOT we don't have the capacity to maintain the lighting on the ramps of the interchange and 309. So with that, PennDOT did give us revised plans in which they took off a significant number of lights. So all the lights that you see highlighted on the plans are now ones that we, as the township, could maintain them. Again, it's similar to the sidewalks. You don't have to accept these lights, however, you know, it's recommended that the township do, you know, does accept them due to the fact that, again, for the aforementioned safety upgrades.
I have a question, Tom. Out of 41 lights, we're now responsible for 16. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. And we either have the internal capacity to maintain them, or our signal service provider with a bucket truck would assist us with that.
And just following up on your comment that it could potentially be under our insurance policy, how is, how would that work if there's an accident there? Is that how the insurance would be?
Yeah, we file a claim, and then, you know, the insurance company, if there's an accident, they would then subrogate the claim to recover the difference.
Routine maintenance would be on the township?
Routine maintenance would be. I was just, you know, in the event that the poles are damaged in an accident, we would go after the person who created the damages, their insurance carrier.
Very good. Thank you.
Can we choose the lights?
No.
So we couldn't ask them to put in solar power like they did on the parkway?
My understanding is they are following strict federal guidelines. I could certainly, I mean, we could try. I suspect the answer is going to be no. Tony, I don't know if you have any insight into that?
I would agree with you. We've been back and forth with PennDOT for the last month or so with items that we've been requesting, and PennDOT's, this is how PennDOT does things, and this is their standard. So unfortunately, that's what the township is left with.
And to your point, Tom, this is a significant lighting upgrade for public safety improvement at this entire intersection.
Yes. Currently, there's no lighting.
Very good. Any other board comments or questions? Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Is there anything online, Dave? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution approving a roadway lighting agreement between South Whitehall Township and PennDOT for the State Route 309 and State Route 1002 Tillman Street Interchange Project? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. Finally, PennDOT is asking the township, the city of Allentown, and Upper McConge Township to essentially come up with an agreement together for an interconnected series of signalized intersections. So of the intersections that are being proposed to be connected, there's 12 in total, 10 are in the township. I'm sorry, nine are in the township. So Tillman Street and 40th Street, that's in the city of Allentown, and then there's two in Upper McConge, Sutronia Road at Chance Road North and Chance Road South. So essentially, what this agreement, which was negotiated between the three municipalities as well as PennDOT, is it allows us to essentially indicate that once these interchange, signalized intersections are installed and interconnected, that we will come up with a maintenance plan for them. So the way the agreement's structured right now is each municipality would be financially responsible for the signalized intersections that are in their own municipality, and then a proportionate cost share would be in place for the interconnect items that touch each municipality as a whole. So again, South Whitehall would bear the primary, you know, they would bear most of the burden of that cost proportionately, and because South Whitehall has the majority, it was suggested that South Whitehall be the administrative lead agency, which makes sense, that we would house any specific equipment as required, and then coordinate improvements as required, which makes sense. So the township engineer was engaged to review the technical aspects of this process, of this project. Essentially, at this point, the technical comments are still being worked on, and we did ask, is it appropriate, while those are being worked on, to enter into this agreement? PennDOT is saying they need this done by April 25th in order to bid out the project. So essentially, what you're saying is right now you just agree to work together, and that you'll come up with a maintenance plan if and when this interconnect happens. The city of Allentown put a provision in the language agreement where they only use a specific brand of lighting equipment. So because they train their employees on that lighting equipment, they want that proprietary request. If that doesn't go through, then the city of Allentown is not privy to this agreement, is my understanding, or it would have to be re-discussed. So at that point, it would be primarily between Upper McConge and South Whitehall. So we would still retain the ability, we would try to retain the interconnect capacity as much as we could, to the maximum extent that's possible. But essentially, like I said, you're, it's a safety, like with the lighting and the sidewalk agreements, it's a safety improvement in terms of trying to interconnect these. The costs would be borne by each municipality where the lights are. PennDOT just wants this in place because they can't bid out the project without it. Any questions?
Yeah. So for a while, this dates back to pre-COVID, emergency services have been trying to get the lights timed on the preemption for Tillman and Housman and Broadway at Housman in such a way that when you come down Tillman and turn onto Housman, you trip the light going west on Tillman and south on, which would be Sutronia Road, so that when you make the turnoff of Tillman, you don't run into the queue of cars that are waiting to go south on Sutronia Road. And conversely, when Sutronia comes out Broadway and turns right to go north on Sutronia Road, they don't run into the queue of cars waiting to get onto Tillman Street, so that the lights would be queued to turn to green when the emergency vehicles came down, either Broadway or Tillman. And we were always told the guts of the lighting was not up to standard. It would have to be paid to be upgraded. And the township at the time was, we'll get a developer to do it, we'll get a developer to do it. We never got a developer to do it. So when we do this, can we address that issue so that the electronics within the lights have the capability to trip multiple lights depending on which one gets tripped?
I know preemption is part of this project. What I suggest we do is, since the technical comments are still being discussed, I suggest that our township engineer put together a response, an amendment to our response that we've already worked on, to incorporate your comments, and then have PennDOT address them.
I was writing down as you were speaking, but we'll sit down and go through that. That's something that we can definitely incorporate into our comments.
Okay.
Again, there's no guarantees with PennDOT, but I think we have to do our best, you put our best foot forward in attempting to address your concerns you're raising.
Well, as a follow-up to that, if this change can't be accomplished through this work at the interchange, is there something the township can do on our own to work on this issue that Chris is raising?
We would require PennDOT approval for any timing changes to the intersection. So I can't fully answer that question without knowing how PennDOT will respond to the request.
Understood. Thank you.
I think the appropriate time is to get it done now. So I mean, they're going to be less likely to go through and re-time and re-change their signals the day one after they put them in. So I think the best time to do it is now. So I would, we're going to push for that.
Very good. Excellent. Thank you. There are no other board comments. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution approving a cooperative memorandum of agreement between the city of Allentown, South Whitehall Township, and Upper McConge Township for the multi-jurisdictional signal system that is a part of the State Route 309 and State Route 1002 Tillman Street Interchange Project?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Tom. Moving on to Agenda Item D, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the township manager to execute a professional services contract with Land Studies for a feasibility assessment and concept plan development for the Jordan Creek at Covered Bridge Park. And Tom, if you please present.
Thank you. Township management and administration have determined it is the best interest of the township to evaluate potential options for the long-term environmental remediation of the Jordan Creek, both upstream and downstream of the Covered Bridge Park Weers Dam area, with the broadly defined goal of improving the stream morphology and taking into account the existing conditions, as well as, you know, still a focus on maintaining the recreational aspects of the park. So township did acquire a proposal from the environmental services firm Land Studies to conduct a feasibility assessment and concept plan development for the Jordan Creek at Covered Bridge Park in the amount of $9,900. Land Studies is based in Littit, PA, has extensive background and experience in working with the municipalities on environmental issues and ecological plans. Their staff has the appropriate certifications and experience to assist the township with this project. As discussed at the last Board of Commissioners meeting, the goal of this is to identify the options for environmental remediation in the study area based on the existing layout and configuration of the park. It's very important to note that this study is a starting point to help give the township options to consider for future study and remediation options. It's not for a complete hydrologic and hydraulic study. However, the scope of the work will confirm whether it would be recommended to conduct a full H&amp;H study as an option. So with that, I would ask for approval of a resolution to execute a professional services contract with Land Studies for the feasibility assessment.
Thank you, Tom. Just curious, what is the timeline for this study if it's approved this evening?
Immediately thereafter. Would circle back with the consultants, and we would hope to have this completed by the fall time period.
Very good. Thank you. Does the board have any comments or questions on this resolution?
Tom, looking at the picture, 7,500 linear feet, you know, stops at Goose Bridge, but it doesn't start up at the Turnpike Bridge. Is there any reason why we didn't include from that turn up to the Turnpike Bridge? Because there's a lot of issues running at the Turnpike Bridge and then working down. At least that's the way I looked at it from the red line that was on the map that showed the study area.
Yeah, the consultants with the understanding that they have to get to the source of the problem, so I think we can work that in, you know, where they understood we need to go upstream. I think what they're trying to focus on is where we would actually have potential options that would be put for improvements, right? So like, I think that's why the study area is delineated the way it is, but they are aware of all of the upstream problems that you referenced. The consultants highly aware of it.
Okay.
So it's, the extents go to the boundary of Covered Bridge Park. So that's our property line is where that stops. So
Right, but
Like Tom mentioned, if there are any improvements along that corridor, we have control over it.
Okay, okay, because I do know that there's a, right after the bridge, there's the large pipe that brings the water off of the field that causes problem with flooding right after the bridge. So I was wondering if, why that wouldn't be included, because that seems to be a problem area. Now, it's not within the fence line of the Turnpike, and I don't know who owns it, apparently not the township, but that causes some problems.
So I think the intent of this study is to look at more of what, not so much of what is causing the flooding, because that's a much larger scope than the $9,000 and the short timeframe here. It's more giving us options, expanding on the concepts that were looked at in the initial park feasibility study that talked about removing the dam. Now, we are kind of revisiting with the dam staying, what are our options still within township property? So that's where focusing on, we know there's flooding issues. What is in our capacity to address flooding issues within the park using the property that we have?
Right, and I don't want it to be limited that And I don't want it to be limited that if we could do something to alleviate some of the issues that occur coming off a property that's not ours, that we could approach the landowner so that they still can include that in their review if there's something that they think could, could be done.
I imagine there'll likely be a recommendation for a more targeted study after this. And the idea is we can't study, you know, the entire corridor to the length in the detail that we need to. So if there's something that we can identify, maybe an area that we can utilize within our township park as storage or additional floodplain or something like that, then maybe we can look at other areas upstream and how we address that. Again, probably we would have to have the H and H study and a little bit more engineering involved. So this is kind of the preliminary step for us to focus a more detailed scope of work instead of coming in with this large, you know, couple hundred thousand dollar study where we can maybe focus our attention where it's most necessary and utilize the best time that we can to identify, you know, targeting what's actually within our capacity instead of just upstream and downstream.
Thanks.
Just building off of Chris's question, so correct me if I'm wrong, but this feasibility study is basically to determine whether or not within the township's property, it's possible or worth doing something. And the recommendation, you know, the study could come back and, and say, no, it's not. This is more of a regional problem. It's, you aren't going to be able to do anything to mitigate this problem here. Am I correct in saying that's?
Correct. Or it could come back and say, you can do something at the tune of X million dollars.
And it's not worth it.
Exactly. Yeah. This is just kind of a, a first step to see, is there anything, when the original feasibility study or the original master site plan was completed for Covered Bridge Park, it included a significant amount of stream restoration. That didn't happen. So this is kind of the, the step that we should revisit to see where, where can we direct our use of the park? That is taking into consideration the flooding issues that are there.
So you could look at it two ways. It's, it's either the study's done to find us options or the study's done to rule out us taking action.
Correct.
Correct. And to also ensure that the funds spent on the next step are, is money well-spent, that we're not putting money into, you know, projects that are not going to bear any, any fruit in terms of improvements.
You said the study would probably be completed by the fall.
That's the goal. Yep.
Do you know if there will be any more time spent after we have significant storms or weather events that there can be observation or measurement or whatever? Do they plan on monitoring that?
Well, what we intend to do is package up all of our drone photography and photos that we have of the flooding over the years. So we're going to start from that, show them how, how bad it gets at its worst points. And then we can, you know, we can address, I can't tell you for sure, like what, I don't know if they'll come out during a rainstorm or something like that, but like, I think they, we need to get a good understanding of, of how, you know, at its worst points, what is the after, what does the aftermath look like? Does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah.
Any other board comments or questions? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution authorizing township manager to execute professional services contract with Land Studies for a feasibility assessment and concept plan development for the Jordan Creek at Covered Bridge Park?
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Tom. Moving on to agenda item E, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Pennsylvania, authorizing the township manager to execute a settlement agreement with Ahabod Lubavitch of the Lehigh Valley Incorporated. Turn it over to our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart, to present.
Yes, so this is for the project at 4457 Cracker Sport Road at the corner of Bulldog and Cracker Sport. This was part of the addition that they put on. They got a waiver from Land Development. There was a series of back bills that were unpaid. This is our agreement to get those settled.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any comments from the board? Or any public comment?
Oh, sure.
They get settled. What do you mean get settled?
Paid up.
Okay. I mean.
Like a hundred percent.
Are you negotiating with them?
No, it'll be a hundred percent.
A hundred percent.
Okay. Yeah. We, we were directed by the board. It was probably the previous board mostly to get it settled up in full.
Any other comment from the board? Public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, a second on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dave. And to item F, we have a resolution extending the conditional preliminary final approval of a major plan entitled 1670 Church Road, Pata Property LLC. I'll turn it over to our planner, Greg Adams, to present.
Thank you. This is an application to further develop the property located at 1670 Church Road. The plan proposes to renovate the existing commercial building, construct a 23-space parking lot, and stormwater management facilities on the 3.4912 acre parcel. The Board of Commissioners granted conditional preliminary final approval to the project on October 19th, 2022 with 23 conditions. The applicant is now requesting additional time to obtain the necessary PADEP approval for site remediation plan. It's the precondition for securing a letter of credit to secure the public improvements. The applicant to date has satisfied 18 of the 23 conditions. Two of the conditions of approval are legal protections and one is a requirement to record the plan within 18 months. Therefore, only two conditions are really left unaddressed, including one, settle all open invoices, which is not generally checked until the plan is close to recording. The applicant's team is available. They're requesting a 180-day extension. Staff recommends a six-month extension. Not to be difficult, but it, it does make the bookkeeping a little easier.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening. You just turn your microphone on, please, sir. Press the button right by the light there.
Push.
Excellent.
How's that? All right. Thanks for having us. Thank you for getting us on the agenda. What Mr. Adams explained is a hundred percent correct, and he did a fine summary of the events in this matter. We're being held up with, we have to get an environmental remediation plan approved through DEP, and we can't get our letter of credit to post our security until we have DEP satisfied and our bank satisfied. All other conditions have basically been met except for the improvements agreement, indemnity agreements, things like that, which I don't see any problem with doing. But we are here to ask for six months more time. That should give us plenty of time. We've built in a cushion to get this wrapped up. And I do have Mr. Merkel from Barry Isit and Mr. Pata are here in case you have any questions for them.
Very good. Thank you, sir. I'll open up to the board. Are there any comments or questions on this extension request? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution? Motion is second on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Well, good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item G, we have a resolution granting preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Nestle Purina Allentown, Pennsylvania Facility New Municipal Water Service. And I'll ask our planner, Greg Adams, to present.
Thank you. This is an application to further develop the property located at 2050 Pope Road. The plan proposes the construction of approximately 4,400 linear feet of waterline between the right-of-way of Huckleberry Road from Ware Mill Road to and on to 2050 Pope Road, as well as an associated 40,000 gallon water tank and 832 square foot mechanical building on the 2050 Pope Road property. The property obviously will be served by public water when this is done. It will have private septic. This plan, well, was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on October 19th, 2023. They recommended with 22 conditions and eight favorably recommended waiver or deferral requests. And the applicant's team is on hand if you have any questions.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Stephanie Kobel from Fitzpatrick Linsen Booba, and I represent the applicant, Nestle Purina. I think Mr. Adams gave a good summary of this project. We have been working with the township on this in the intervening months between October and now, specifically with regard to the fact that we are installing a larger waterline, which not only is going to service the Nestle facility, but is also going to service some of the neighboring properties and has potential for future connections, you know, with whatever occurs in the future in this part of the township. So we are really pleased to be here tonight and, and would ask for a positive recommendation from the board on the preliminary final plan approval, as well as positive recommendations on the, I believe it's six waivers and two deferrals, if I have that number correct. To the extent the board has any engineering questions, we do have Mr. Merkel from Barry Isit Engineering with us this evening to answer them. Unfortunately, Mr. Williams had other obligations in a neighboring township this evening.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Greg, and thank you for your presentation. Are there any board comments or questions on this resolution for the Purina plan?
I do have a question. Nestle Purina is going to be responsible for all the paving. Is that correct?
The paving of the, the repaving of Huckleberry Road?
Yes.
Yeah, that's part of the project. Yes.
Okay. And how can we diminish any disruption? Like, will there be a detour? Will the roads be closed? How can we decrease the impact for the businesses there?
We already worked with them that they will have to keep traffic flowing. We understand that it will have to close down at some points as trucks are moving out, equipment's moving in, but they will be short-term and we will allow traffic to maintain movement.
Okay. So it's not going to be anything like when the bypass was being redone and we had a
Where they had to shut it down completely. No.
Good enough. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the board? Is there any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution granting preliminary final approval for a major plan, Nestle Purina Allentown, Pennsylvania Facility New Municipal Water Service?
Second.
We have a motion, a second on favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item H, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the township manager to execute a professional services contract with the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association for an executive search for the position of Chief of Police of the South Whitehall Township Police Department. I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to please present.
Thank you. With the resignation of former Chief of Police, Glenn Dorney, the township is seeking to utilize a firm to help assist township management and the governing body to select the next Chief of Police by way of a competitive, neutral, and unbiased search process and independent evaluation. The Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association has significant level of depth of experience in assisting municipalities with a number of specialty areas concerning law enforcement, including but not limited to police testing accreditation and hiring. Township, the township has obtained a proposal from the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association. The proposal was included in the, in the packet. It's the recommendation of township management to utilize program number two assessment center at a cost of $9,000. So that includes a structure to interview and an analysis presentation. Would request a approval of the resolution, which would authorize the township manager to execute the contract with the police, Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association. And to be clear, the township would be evaluating both internal and external candidates that apply.
Thank you for presenting, Tom. Open up to the board if there are any comments or questions on this resolution? None? Are there any public comments? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution?
Motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. I'm going to skip over our next agenda item to go on to agenda item nine A motions, and then I will return back to this resolution. Moving on to agenda item nine A, we have a motion to proceed with adoption of the civil service promotional list for entry-level position of patrol officer in the South Whitehall Township Police Department. I'll ask our interim chief Brown to please present.
Yes. Good evening. The police department has conducted civil service testing. We did so on March 23rd for the agility test and a written test. It was sponsored by the Lehigh County Chiefs Association. We also did interviews at the next phase for all people who passed. We did the top 25 off of the passing scores. We did that on April 3rd or 4th and 5th. So at this point, all aspects of the training process have been completed, or the testing process has been completed. This includes the agility test, the written examination, and the oral interview. We took the results in front of the Civil Service Commission on Wednesday, April 10th, and the list was certified by them. We are requesting the Board of Commissioners make a motion to adopt the newly certified civil service list for entry-level patrol officer.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any board comments or questions? Any public comments? Need a motion to approve said motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Now we'll go back to resolution I, a resolution extending a conditional offer of employment for entry-level position of patrol officer in the township's police department to applicant number 76055, conditioned upon the individual satisfactorily completing the background investigation, polygraph examination, medical examination, and psychological examination to confirm their fitness for duty. And I'll ask interim chief Brown again to please present.
Yes, this is for the police department in the hiring process. We currently have one vacancy due to retirement in the beginning of the year. So we're looking to get the approval for the vacancy for entry-level patrol officer positions via the civil service guidelines, and the board needs to extend the, needs to vote to extend a conditional offer of employment to candidate 76055.
Very good. Thank you. Any board comments or questions?
Does this person have the academy already?
Actually, this person does, yes.
Any other comments? Any board, sorry, any public comments? Do I have a motion to adopt a resolution extending a conditional offer of employment to applicant number 76055?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Don't go anywhere, Captain Brown. We have a motion to proceed with capital purchase vehicle replacements for South Whitehall Township Police Department.
Got a lot of papers right here, so. Police department is in the process of fleet upgrades, and we are requesting authorization to purchase three new patrol vehicles in accordance with our current fleet plan. All three vehicles will be used to replace current frontline patrol vehicles. These current vehicles will stay in the fleet and be reassigned to the community relations section for a school resource officer, as well as two being later upfitted to replace the K-9 vehicles, which are all older. This is necessary due to the aging fleet of the, aging fleet vehicles that need to be replaced and taken out of service due to excessive mileage and safety concerns. These vehicles will, the vehicles being taken out of service will be decommissions and most likely with approval put on municipal. Furthermore, we have a growing minority of our officers who are significantly over six feet tall. We have four that are 6'5" or taller. They really have to turn their heads to walk through a doorway sometimes. We found that the size of cockpit in some of these vehicles not only inhibits a comfort or a comfortable work environment, as officers are often on patrol for most of their 12-hour shifts, but it also hinders their ability to maneuver while driving in both non-emergency and emergency conditions. Since 2020, we have installed half-seat prisoner compartments that give the driver more legroom. Unfortunately, we discovered that it's not really the legroom. It's the, the roof size. Their head is pretty much touching the roof of the vehicle. And this hinders their ability to get in and out of the vehicle effectively. We also increased the amount of equipment inside the vehicles, make it even less room for storage. Officers carry patrol bags and other necessary equipment to be able to efficiently and effectively do their jobs. The smaller cockpits have been filled with computers, mounts, mobile radios, speed timing devices, as well as printers. It take up a lot of room. This leaves less room for the average This leaves less room for the average officer, or office-sized officers as well. Officers can be tasked to reach for equipment such as radio microphones and controls for the emergency visual and audio signals on a frequent basis, so having these regulations available is important. Having more trunk space would allow for organization of the equipment, ease of access, and be able to get it quickly, leaving less of it to be stored in the interior space of the vehicle. The Michigan State Police conducts testing every year, testing evaluations on the police package vehicles offered by the different manufacturers annually. These vehicles, vehicle models are broken down by several factors, which I supplied in the packet. A brief synopsis of it is in the chart that's on the screen right now. We also have a growing concern with the vehicle maintenance records. As, sorry, as you can see on the chart, the Chevy Tahoe has the most cubic feet in the front interior. The Ford Interceptor, which is currently what we have now, has about five cubic feet less on the inside, and the Drango is even smaller. There's been a growing concern with the maintenance records for our current fleet. I included that chart as well. This essentially shows the records how the regularity of issues with the current fleet that we have, basically model year 2020 and earlier or later. What happens is that these vehicles have regular issues. We see it happen to one car, and then it happens to another. It is covered under warranty in most cases. However, that car then has to go to the dealer to be repaired, and it's up to the dealer to fit it in when they can, which means that car's out of service, which means somebody else is jumping in another car that regularly wouldn't be used for that shift, racking up more mileage on that vehicle. So with all this information, we've done our due diligence with obtaining quotes for vehicles. We have requested and received a quote from three different dealerships for a 2024 Chevy Tahoe PPV and a 2025 Ford Interceptor EcoBoost that was, that has been provided with Coast Stars pricing. Given the issues I just discussed, we received quotes for the Ford Interceptor 3.0 EcoBoost All-Wheel Drive, which is a different model than the ones we have in our current fleet. The issue with these is Ford does not have any more 2024 models available. So we would have to have a signed quote to obtain a 2025 Ford Interceptor, but that would not be available for at least next year. We didn't obtain any quotes for the Dodge Drango, it was significantly smaller, and we found that the order banks have already closed. We looked at another option for a larger interior, was this Ford Expedition. However, Ford did not make a Pursuit rated model in 2024. The Pursuit models are basically designed for police work. They have a better suspension, they hold up more with the type of driving that we do or in the constant miles of running, the engine hours. The lowest vehicle Coast Star's price for a marked 2024 Chevy Tahoe All-Wheel Drive was $53,000 with an upfitting cost of $23,093.53, or a total cost of $76,093.57. The overall total for the vehicles would be $228,280.71. This price falls within the budgeted amount and will still allow for the K-9 vehicles to be upfitted later on this year. Additionally, the three vehicles being decommissioned will potentially be sold at auction. With all this information, we are requesting the Board of Commissioners approve the purchase of the three Chevy Tahos from Whitmire Auto Group. The vehicles were budgeted for in the 2024 budget, but with budgeted for was $275,000.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Brown. I do want to thank you for preparing a very comprehensive menu, menu memo with all of the quotes for the vehicles, as well as a full background data information, which I personally feel was very, very helpful in the packet. So thank you and your command staff for all of the work. I'll open up to the board if there are any comments or questions.
I do have a comment, and I want to thank you for all the information, and especially for including the Michigan report. I appreciate that. Should this go through tonight, how quickly can these be ordered, and when would you receive them?
Ordering as soon as possible would bring, hopefully bring them to the dealer for availability by May or June, and then hopefully we can get them into the upfitter shortly thereafter and get them out to the fleet.
You'd have them during the summer sometime.
They are supposed, this, this next order bank is going to be provided in June, May or June.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for your work.
So, three Tahos, buy three Tahos, it's in the budget, you're under budget, it's fine. My concern is your long-term plan for vehicles, first time I ever saw a plan for the vehicles, but I think that is a pie in the sky, that you're going to continue to be able to get by with only getting three new vehicles for patrols in the future, number one. Number two is, I don't think you should limit it to Chevy Tahos due to the changing technology out there. We don't know what the technology would be next year, let alone three years down the road, and there may be something better than a Chevy Tahoe. So I would rather see, in my opinion, I'd rather see you just say, we need, we're anticipating three new vehicles each year, which I think is low, and then leave it to what technology, the best technology for the department is going to be, is just my few cents.
I believe that's how we budget them, didn't we, this year, Tom? It's.
We did. If, so when these were ordered last year, we had ordered two Explorers and two Tahos, and the intent was to track the maintenance of each. Unfortunately, they have not been received yet due to logistical issues. So we weren't able to do that, but, but with that in mind, the budget was specifically prepared to allow for what we felt was the best option for the township.
Without a particular brand?
Without a particular brand. But to your point, Commissioner Pejul, the plan does specify Tahos, so yeah, going forward.
Right, so what I saw was just, that's the first plan I ever heard of, saw.
Yeah.
And that was just my comment, so if there's something different, I wasn't aware of it.
Good point.
That's just what we feel is the best choice now. We can reevaluate it. This Michigan study does, goes every year, so we can reevaluate next year. We basically put the plan together so that we can have a visual to show these three cars.
And Tesla may come out with a Pursuit model, too. You never know.
There's that. I would ask, though, that, that we do continue to monitor the expenses for, for the vehicles, so we, we know the fuel, of fuel expenses, we know the maintenance expenses, because this is new for us. So I think it's a really good idea to keep going forward and comparing.
Yeah, what we're gonna, what we're gonna be doing with police, a lot of the township vehicles, there is a new program that's coming out. We're going to be meeting with these individuals. It will actually break down what it costs us to run this car per mile. This way, police will have it, Public Works will have that data. We're going to be meeting with them next week, once we receive the packet of information from them, go through it, and then sit down and go over the logistics with them, and try to negotiate a price of what it would cost to have the fleet have that information readily available for everybody.
Excellent. That's good news, thank you. Any other board comment? Any public comment? Anything online? No. Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the purchase of three Chevy Tahos from the Whitmire Auto Group?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
We thank you very much, and this was very much a team effort for the command staff, and we used some guidance from Tom, but it was, it was a lot of work, but we're very happy.
Well, very well done. We appreciate all the effort from you and your team.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the command staff for, for compiling all the information requested.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you to all. One more. Chief Brown, we have a motion to proceed with a capital purchase of rifles and associated equipment for South Whitehall Township Police Department.
Yes. So the police department is requesting to upgrade our patrol rifles in our vehicles to better protect the officers in our department. Our current rifle is what they call a long-barrel AR-15 model rifle. Essentially has a longer barrel that can accommodate a silencer, that will suppress the high decibel noise of a round leaving the barrel in enclosed space, such as a building or vehicle. There's a documented local incident where the police department, where an officer had discharged his firearm inside a vehicle, led to that officer's hearing loss after the officer-involved shooting. This serves as a prime example for the need for such equipment. Additionally, our officers are trained on the range in very similar situations. We like to prepare officers for everything, so they've had, they've already been inside a vehicle and discharged the firearm while wearing hearing protection, and they could still hear and feel the concussion of the rifle being discharged. With the use of the ARPA funds designated to the police department for body cameras and in-car cameras, covered by grants, we would be able to cover the expense of equipment the officers with the gear that will potentially save their lives and diminish liability. Essentially, we could protect officers' hearing during a critical incident by suppressing the noise and reducing the chance of hearing loss, as well as the cost of liability for disability, disability pensions. Although the use of suppression systems and protection of hearing are not new, the technology has been tailored to law enforcement applications and has come, become best practice throughout the profession. Surrounding agencies have already procured short-barrel rifles with silencers and equipment to suppress the noise. The South Whitehall Township Police Department firearms instructors and command staff have done due diligence in evaluating weapons, systems, and various suppressor systems, and believe that the listed combination will serve our needs effectively at the right cost. The same weapons and silencers are currently used by the five members of the Lehigh County Emergency Response Team who are on our department. We are requesting the Board of Commissioners approve the purchase of 30 BCM CBQ rifles for $39,300, as well as 30 suppressors for $28,539. The total cost of it would be $67,839, which are being covered as part of the ARPA funds that were designated by the, to the police department. So during the course of the 2024 budget adoption, the Board of Commissioners previously approved an interior fund transfer in the amount of $673,606.27 of the American Rescue Plan Fund to Capital Reserve Fund to help support the anticipated cost of new body camera, in-car camera systems, a project which resulted in a lower budgeted amount. As a part of the approval, if you were to approve this, we would request that the above described capital expenditure for weapons are transferred from the Capital Fund Reserve line item for body worn in, in cameras to a newly created Capital Fund Reserve for line items for weapons, and make the transfer in the amount of $67,839 if approved. The township is not exceeding the total line amount budgeted, and the existing budget capital reserves are being shifted, as summarized.
Very good. Thank you again, Chief Brown, for your diligence in compiling this memo and information for the board. I'll open up to the board if there's any comments or questions on this agenda item, or any public comment. Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with capital purchase rifles and associated equipment for South Whitehall Township Police Department?
So moved.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
And we thank you. Again, it's another team effort with the command staff.
Well, please pass along our appreciation to your command staff as well. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 90, we have a motion to proceed with request for proposal for zoning consultant for the Jordan Valley Open Space Zoning Overlay. I'll ask our long-range planner, Chris Stroller, to please present.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. So when the township adopted the comprehensive plan last year, we've been talking about zoning updates. In the fall, we engaged the consulting services of Housal Levine to work with us in the software ArcGIS Urban to start to put together pieces of our zoning ordinance in an effort to look at some build-out scenarios and start to have all the pieces in place for us to look at how we can best tackle zoning ordinance overhaul and how we can actually monitor and evaluate some of the potential changes prior to diving into, actually going through the whole ordinance. We have a short presentation at the end of the agenda on what we've been doing with Housal Levine, and we'll be able to show you some of the, the software and how we have everything kind of put into place. One of the things that we've been exploring, certainly in, kind of in step with our South Whitehall Landscapes Plan and our areas that we've identified for resource protection, we're looking to pursue a, an open space zoning overlay district that would encompass the northern part of the township in the Jordan Valley area. So what we're asking tonight is a motion to submit or to release an RFP to hire a consultant to assist us in the development of this zoning overlay. The consultant would be responsible for the drafting of the overlay text, for a complimentary design manual or design guidelines associated with this ordinance overlay, and would be working with us to further develop uses that are, that would be used in the zoning ordinance overlay. The other piece of this that is helpful is it gives township staff the ability to start to test out some of the concepts that we'd like to incorporate into a larger zoning ordinance overlay, I mean, into a larger zoning ordinance change down the line, using some of the concepts from the comprehensive plan, like the idea of place types and the complimentary uses and focusing really on open space for this overlay. So you have the RFP in front of you. Ideally, we would release this immediately if approved tonight, and we are giving about a month to have submissions due, and we're looking really for progressive firms to assist us with good concepts. We have highlighted the potential goals of this open space overlay district for the Jordan Valley. Those goals would be to maximize open space preservation, minimize the impacts to local roadways, prioritize complementary development patterns, and maintain private property owners' development rights. The purpose of the overlay, this would be optional for landowners and developers to opt into, and the, the entire area that it would cover is a pretty large section of the township. Again, I'll kind of go through in our presentation later, I can show you what we're looking at. Really, we're hoping that the ordinance overlay will provide options to better balance preservation of open space in complement with residential, commercial, and industrial uses, all of which are in the, in the Jordan Valley now. And it is, we're looking to have this really as an incentive-based option for people to consider opting into and help us accomplish our goals, as explained in the comprehensive plan.
Excellent. Chris, thank you for that presentation. Thank you for bringing this to the board for our consideration. I'll open up to the board if there are any comments or questions on the agenda item.
Chris, I have a quick question for you. Well, first, I want to thank you for all your hard work, your department. I agree, support, and very much like the proposed goals. I think they're great goals. Thank you. I'm just curious, historically, how did we do overlays in the past? Does anyone have? Because we're, I know we're going, taking extra steps to get this right and, you know, support these goals.
Was the question how we did the overlay?
Yeah, how did we develop overlays in the past? I think the last one was in 2014.
Yeah, it was, it was recommended in the 2009 comp plan, and it went through the process of doing the overlays, adopting an ordinance and everything associated with that. Greg could probably speak to how, the process of it, as far as like what, I mean, I'm sure it went through all the required public notices and public hearings and everything, but it was also kind of on the tail end of a comprehensive plan.
Yeah, that is correct. This was done as part of the comprehensive plan, I'm sorry, the zoning ordinance update in 2014. We updated both the zoning ordinance and the zoning map, so the overlay was hand-in-hand. There was a text component and the map component. They were basically recommended by the comprehensive plan consultant, Thomas Cametta. He went through the He went through the process. There was obviously some desire by the township at the time to produce these things that gave people interested in developing their property a different option than what base zoning provided. So they wrote that into the ordinance. We adopted both the map and the, the text of the ordinance, which included not only the, the overlays, but a number of changes that we did to make the zoning ordinance more consistent with the comprehensive plan of 2009. So that was basically the process.
Thank you for explaining that to me. I appreciate it.
So what, what do we want these overlays? Help me, help me understand this. What do we want the overlays to accomplish? So what Greg just said is we give the landowner other options to develop their land within the Jordan Valley park, the Jordan Valley Greenway. But if it's already zoned a certain way, the way we want it to be zoned, why would we make exceptions?
So, and this is kind of what Urban has shown us. It may not be zoned how we want. There is, are not the open space requirements under current zoning. So really this, and it's kind of the same way for the TND. When you opt in, you have to, and usually there's some sort of incentive to opt in. But as you opt in, you then, almost like a contract, you agree to do the following X, Y, and Z. So in order to get those incentives, you agree to design guidelines, more open space requirements. Road access is something we're exploring. So there's different parameters we can put on in an overlay as an opt-in to get those incentives, to try and get what we want out of it.
So does the overlay override the zoning? So you said it's not, so if the person can go back to the zoning?
Yes.
Which we may not like, is it zoned a certain way? So you put this overlay in to try to get them to buy into something that we're more? Can we just change the original zoning of the land?
It's harder to, the one goal with maintain private property rights is really the kind of sticking point and the most difficult piece to balance if we were to change the zoning outright. The idea is to allow more flexibility between zones. Because we're looking at a large area, we hope to build in some incentives to chain, transfer development from one area to another area that may not be under base zoning. The other thing it allows is, you know, if, if it's on the books, we see it's working, then we can look at changing base zoning. If there are things in the provisions of the overlay that we feel would be applicable to base zoning, we can certainly take them out of that and build into base zoning. So it's kind of a way to get it on the books, test it out, run it through the process, and then kind of evaluate afterwards, and then potentially look at changing the base zoning.
Chris, let me give you a concrete example that might help. The classic example for an overlay often comes up in the context of desiring to have open space in a residential community. Let's just say the base zoning allows for 100 houses on 50 acres, just pulling an example out. And that's what a developer could put on that site. If the township is interested in having more open space, what the township could do is say, developer, there should be 20 or 25 acres of open space in this overlay. If you're willing to give us 25 acres of open space, we'll allow you to get 120 houses there. And one of the reasons it's an incentive is the developer gets more houses, but the township can't lawfully require 25 acres of open space out of 50 acres.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris and Dave, but essentially we could have a situation following the adoption of a potential overlay ordinance where base zoning aside, you'd have a situation where a developer would opt into the overlay. There'd be a net benefit to the township because of enhanced open space or natural resource protection or what have you. And depending on, on the incentives in the ordinance, there could actually be a net benefit to a developer where the overlay use that accomplishes more of the preservation goals could actually be more profitable for the developer as well as opposed to base zoning. And it gives us an option that, that benefits not only property owners, but also the township in terms of accomplishing all of our preservation goals.
Yes, it, you're absolutely correct. There are, and that's part of why we were going with the ArcGIS Urban model. And we're also looking and kind of trying to get together a evaluation team that can look at the zoning overlay. Similar to what we did in the comprehensive plan where we had the travel model and the economic model, having the overlay go through some of this, that process to determine fiscal impact to the township and then also look at the economics for any developers. To determine, because if it doesn't make sense for a developer, they're not going to use it. It's just going to sit on a shelf. So we get, we should have that kind of evaluation to see if it's even worth going forward. And we're trying to build that into, into the process.
And then my only other question was, assuming we adopt this motion tonight, what sort of a timeline are we looking at for a draft ordinance to, to come back to the board or even some modeling to come back to the board?
So we, quickly, as quick as possible. We're hoping to like the-
I don't think planners have the word "quick" in their vocabulary, just-
Quick on a township's scale.
Okay.
We're targeting the end of the year. And I think, you know, we've done a lot of work and we'll show some of it tonight leading up to it so that hopefully we, when we get to these evaluation processes, that gets incorporated into the development of the ordinance so that we don't have to come back and do another round of revisions. So hopefully we can have that kind of self-checks throughout the process.
Excellent comments from both commissioners, all three of them, I'm sorry. I applaud your efforts to bring this to the board, to look, to work with developers, landowners, to balance potentially the preservation of open space here. If we've got an ability to reduce the impacts of traffic on, these are the very things our residents have brought to, to this board and to the Planning Commission. I'm sure you hear it in the Community Development Department. And I, I feel this is a very useful and important tool for the township to explore to, to do just that, to balance the, the rights of the landowner and then hopefully have a benefit to the township for our community as well. So I applaud your efforts and I certainly do support this. Any other comments?
If we approve this tonight, it's not hurting anybody at all.
No, and the, the nature of an overlay is, is it's optionary, option involuntary.
And to be clear, yeah, and to be clear, you're approving the RFP tonight? So you're not approving any, any change at this stage?
Are there any public comments?
Rob Hodge's 1707 Penns Crossing, you can unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I think my question might have just been answered, but just to be sure, if this overlay is adopted, the developers can choose to ignore it and not follow it and just go by the original zoning?
They certainly could, but hopefully we'll have enough incentives in there that they would want to do it.
But it is at their discretion?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a follow-up to that resident's question. We've seen that you've, the planning department, you've seen this work in other communities where you work with developers with some sort of an overlay to maximize the developers.
There's, overlay is one technique. We've looked to Chester County, PA, as a local example where they've done a lot of conservation subdivision is really big in Chester County. So we've kind of been looking to them for, for models. So that's one of the areas that they've done, something like an overlay or this process concept.
Can you just define briefly a snapshot of conservation or the initial development?
So it's exactly like Joe, Joe explained. If you have a 10-acre lot, you can get 10 houses under base zoning. Under conservation-based subdivision, you can get 15 houses on that 10 acres, but it has to be in, this is a bad example number-wise, but in five acres of that parcel, the other five acres is open space. So instead of having development sprawled across the lot, you have it concentrated in one, one location.
And if a development is built that way, that open space is in perpetuity?
Yes, and that's what we'll, we'll build in. So a little plug coming. We have our landscapes plan and we have open space strategies in that. And we'll talk about different strategies and how to preserve certain rights. Yes, stay tuned for that one.
Is it going to be like cluster development more or less?
Yes.
Okay, I think all questions have been answered. There's no other public comment in chat. Okay, at this time, do I have a motion to proceed with request for proposal for zoning consultant for the Jordan Valley Open Space Zoning Overlay? Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, correspondence and information items. I'll ask our township manager to update our informational items.
Thank you. This Saturday, April 20th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, we have the Earth Day event, which is a volunteer opportunity at Cover Bridge Park. So we would ask everyone to please join us for that. Monday, April 22nd, 5:30 PM, Landscape and Shade Tree Commission, that's the new date and time. Wednesday, also at, at 6:00 PM that, that day is the, the newly formed Environmental Advisory Council. Wednesday, April 24th, 10:00 AM is our Pension Committee meeting. Wednesday, 24th at 7:00 PM, the zoning hearing board was actually canceled. And then Wednesday, May 1st, 7:00 PM, Board of Commissioners. Also, if you go to our township website, the township recently put together a resident request portal. So I would ask, you know, basically the residents, please check that out. It's a good way to submit requests for investigation or requests for services from the township. So that's newly implemented. So it's, we're, we're asking you to please test that out. You know, we're warranted. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And just a reminder, our township meetings are certainly in person, but we also do have them virtual. I go to meetings, so check out our township website. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, direction discussion, we have our ArcGIS Urban system presentation. For which one of our planners, Chris Stroller, our long-range planner?
Yes, as I'm pulling that up, I'll make a selfish little plug for, also next week, we have the Lehigh County Envirothon happening here in our Cover Bridge Park. This event is hosted by the Lehigh County Conservation District. The first year we hosted it here last year, they were thrilled with that and asked to come back again. So I'm not sure how many districts will be competing, but we expect to have a great competition on Tuesday and Thursday of next week.
Excellent. Thank you.
So I'll show a couple of screenshots here of ArcGIS Urban. And we can kind of feel free to ask some questions as we move along. But essentially, this, this is software that we use, mapping software. And as we had mentioned previously, the idea behind this software is it gives us the idea to visualize certain things, but also the, I think the, the beauty of it and the, really where this kind of shines is the metrics that are built into it and all the, the data that's in the background. So just a quick snapshot here, this is the township land use map, future land use map out of the comprehensive plan. The area shown in blue is the potential overlay boundary. It's about 5,500 acres across the northern part of the township. As you can see, there's several different land uses there. Here's a more zoomed-in version. So the idea of the overlay, as you can see, all of these different colors here represent different existing zoning districts. So when we are talking about an overlay, the idea is to have an option. In this case, regardless of the zoning district that you're in, you could opt into this zoning overlay. And as long as you meet the provisions of that overlay, you could develop in accordance to what the ordinance says. So the idea here is, again, with those goals in mind, looking at limiting traffic impacts, really maximizing open space. So it doesn't really matter if it's commercial, residential, industrial. We are putting kind of the open space at the forefront of all of that. So the, the areas in black here are properties that we removed from what we've been working with Housal Levine on is a build-out scenario under current conditions. So what we have in here is, under existing zoning, with the parameters in existing zoning, this is what could happen fully built out. So it's pretty impactful. One of the things that we wanted to make sure, we took out existing protected properties and the schools that are in the area. But everything else that's vacant or has the ability to be subdivided, be subdivided, has been included in this. Here's an example of just how sort of urban looks and, and here's kind of, the buildings aren't really done to design, but it just, it places the buildings there to show you what can be built in these areas under current zoning. So this is our neighborhood commercial district along with some industrial and some rural residential up at the crossroads of Orfield Road and North Cedar Crest Boulevard. You can see some of the existing buildings that are now. And then through our build-out scenario, gives you an idea, again, these are kind of just dots placed around, but it gives you an idea of scale of what can be built out. And then this is just another screenshot of a good example of some of the data behind all this. So here's a vacant lot in the northern part of the township, existing residential around it under current zoning. This parcel could net about 13 individual units. Those individual units, based on the, the metrics and the calculations we put in, could be a possible additional population of 34 people. That could generate about 124 daily trips per day. So the transportation, the travel metrics is something really important to us. We're looking at how can we use this information, understanding what could happen under current zoning so that we can use in our overlay mechanisms to help reduce traffic impacts, whether that be through changes to the ordinance or some of the additional provisions that we would require in order to opt into this zoning overlay. The other very important metric here, total open space required under this development right now would be six tenths of an acre under current zoning. Again, that gives us a really good baseline to start to think about if we were to have the provisions in the ordinance trying to maximize open space, how do we get that number to increase significantly? And that's where we'll be kind of, as Dave mentioned, our evaluation team. Once we start to put the pieces of the ordinance together, we'll be able to run some of this through Urban in almost real-world scenarios with, you know, potential development. And that potential development, we could test the, the, the metrics and kind of the, the delta of what do we have now under current zoning? And are we getting enough out of the, the goals that we have? That's kind of just the, the snapshot of this. I'm happy to take questions. I, I can show the software a little bit, but these are really kind of the highlighted examples.
Very interesting. Thank you for that presentation. Does the board have any comments or questions on the information that's been shared? Very interesting. Excellent work. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no old business tonight. Agenda Item 13 is courtesy of the floor. Again, any opportunity for any member of the public to address the board?
Have one online?
Of course.
Brian, go ahead and unmute. Name and address?
Brian Height, 1273 Eck Road. This is a follow-up to Commissioner Peichl's question regarding solar lighting at 309 in Tillman and what was done on American Parkway. American Parkway in the city, downtown, is a city-owned road, including the bridge. That's city-owned as well. So those lights were funded outside of the Penda and thus was not beholden to the federal process. And Manager Petucci is correct that the 309 Tillman Street project is majorly federally funded. And right now, solar lighting is not an option for federally funded projects. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Very helpful. Thank you. Is there anyone else online? Moving on to Agenda Item 14, I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no executive session. I need a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good.